President, Planning Board members are Herman Lillia, Tom Mekes, and Jason Shaw. Absent are Hank Betts, who notified the board that he was not going to be attending the meeting tonight, and also Terry Duffy, who may appear later, but we do have a quorum and we are beyond the scheduled time. So we'll start on the agenda with the first item of business, which is public discussion. Is there any public discussion? All right, there being no public discussion.
I see your hand.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Please come up and announce your name, et cetera.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. When you had your interview with the Board of Selectmen, you spoke of the transportation-oriented development project, Cameron's Toad, as being something that was, you were going to pursue, but it would be perhaps years before anything came of it. Does that mean that you've put it off, or will it be coming forward for a vote, the zoning changes at the Springtown meeting?
Well, that's a discussion we're going to have later in the meeting, Toby. This meeting.
I see.
I'll just talk about that and where we want to go, but I can't answer that right now.
And I also was disconcerted by your enthusiasm for the so-called Walkshed District. You know, I mean, you're not unaware that, you know, anything that is legit as an apartment can by right be sold as a condominium. Chicken coops and garages are, have a ready market as luxury condos. And there are also, of course, you know, possible Airbnb rentals. So the claim that any of this might produce needed housing for the town, whether or not it was affordable housing, strikes me as, you know, far-fetched, bogus. Would you care to comment?
Not right now, no. Thank you. Any other public discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is the approval of review and approval or changes to or comments on the minutes of the October 3, 2019 meeting of this board. I think everyone has a copy. I'm assuming everyone has had the opportunity to read the minutes. If there are any deletions, changes, additions, now's the time to bring them up.
Nothing here.
I didn't attend.
Well, that's right, you weren't there.
Leaving you with the decision about whether we can vote.
Yeah, I don't think we can, because we don't have, we wouldn't have sufficient vote at this point.
I attended a online session of the Open Meeting Law.
Yeah.
This question came up, and they said, only need a majority, because of people aren't voting on the process by which the minutes were produced, not on the actual content.
Say all that again.
Yeah.
I wish I could.
Have a drink of water first.
That's what started me coughing. Okay, I know it's the practice of other boards and committees not to do it unless there's a majority of people who were present at the meeting.
Right.
But at the Open Meeting Law webinar, I understood them to say, in answer to a question on this specific thing, that to vote on it, one need not have attended the meeting, because the vote is on the process which has produced the minutes, rather than the actual content.
I don't really understand what that means. The vote is on the process. How the minutes were produced?
You agree with the process by which these were brought forward, not necessarily the content. Not to be safe, you could postpone the approval until you do have a majority of who was present. I'm just telling you my-
I'm sure he will show up. I mean, I, that sounds, it doesn't sound consistent with any minutes that I have ever been associated with, that, you know, it's-
It was a surprise to me to-
It is not the process, it is the content.
Yeah, I know. I understand what they mean by the process. That's the, I mean, was, was it recorded and then transcribed properly, or, but how can you say that unless you were there to hear it, you know? So let's put it off. I'm more comfortable doing that.
That's fine. Maybe you can get a citation for future-
Okay. Thanks for the sharing. So we'll move to item three, which is old business. This is, we never voted. We did have a public hearing. We closed the public hearing on the site plan review for major construction project plans and submittal checklist. We actually never voted to adopt that, and we did change, and I have a copy of it. The change was on the, under the utilities detail plans, under electrical details, we did have, add a bullet point of exterior lighting, and it is in there. So what I would ask to do is to vote for approval of this checklist and for incorporation, because the checklist has to be incorporated into the existing rules and regulations. And the existing rules and regulations say that they're governing the subdivision of land in Rockport, Massachusetts, but actually, this is for the site plan review for major construction projects. So I would ask that the motion encompass two things. One is approving the site plan review for major construction project, and also incorporating this document into the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of lands with changing the title to add also that it will include the site plan review checklist. So someone reading the rules and regulations won't think it's just for the subdivision. They'll know that it's also for the major construction project, so.
Are you thinking, when you say subdivision, a true, the creation of a true subdivision?
Well, I'm just, what I'm-
Because that, that does contain both information on the creation of a true subdivision, as well as reference to A and Rs, does it not?
Yeah, I'm just, all I'm referring to is the existing document. These are, these are the only rules and regulations that-
Right.
-that the planning board has. So what we have now are these, these, site plan review for major construction projects-
Add it.
-which will be part of these rules and regulations. But the, but the title just says-
But don't worry about it, for now.
But don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it. Just add it in, because it also is a, is a collection of more than one broad collection of information.
This is, this is just-
But doesn't it contain reference to A and Rs?
No, it really doesn't.
In the front of it, isn't there?
No, just, you know, subdefinition, subdivision, preliminary definitive. I don't see anything about A and Rs in there.
But when you read subdivision, when you read about subdivisions, I think it talks about different kinds of subdivisions. And, you know, the term subdivision is confounding, because it isn't just a true subdivision of land into house lots with the creation of a road.
Well, I don't really see that here, but I, I don't know if that's, I guess I'm not making myself clear.
No, I hear you.
This is, this has nothing to do with subdivision. This is site plan review. All I'm saying is that if we're going to incorporate the site plan review into the existing rules and regulations, that we change the title so someone looking at this will know that, oh, it's for subdivision and it's also for site plan, these rules and regulations. That's all. I mean, that's, it's just a matter of changing the title.
I hear you. I didn't bring mine with me.
Okay.
Can I borrow them just a second?
This?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. (pause) (inaudible) 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 I don't know what, I don't know what confusion that'll cause. I mean, one, one additional point would be that this has been in need of updating.
Yeah.
So at the time of updating, you can expand the, expand the title at that point, and reissue it as a new document, but that's fine. It's, it's not a big issue, if that's where you're going to send people, and that's fine.
Well, I'm going to, you know, supposedly they'll get a copy of the rules and regulations, and in that will be these site plan review for major construction project standards. So why don't we just, we, we need a motion to approve the site plan review standards for major construction projects and to incorporate them into the existing rules and regulations. How does that sound?
That'll be fine.
That's, if someone wanted to make that motion, motion made by Herman, second the motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, motion carried.
Okay.
So we've approved these major construction project site plan review standards for whenever we get a major construction project, whenever that may be. Okay, next item. This is, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at this. This is under new business, under the Certificate of Performance for a pack accord, which I got a call and some correspondence with a lawyer representing, I think, the buyers of one of these lots, and apparently, the title company was concerned that the, the requirements for this certificate of performance were not complied with, meaning it needs to be a document that's signed by the planning board, notarized, signatures are notarized, so it's certified. And we went back and forth a little bit, and we did pull out the April 17, 2014 minutes, which have been attached to this certificate. And as you can see, item five on the minutes, it says basically that the board approved the, just reading it quickly. Chris Trupiano appeared before the board and requested that the planning board certify that the project is completed to its satisfaction, and informed Paul Orlando, building inspector, of the board's decision, so that Mr. Orlando can issue a certi, certificate of occupancy for each unit. It was then determined that the project was completed to the board's satisfaction, meaning this board, after which Mr. Smith made a motion that the board certify that the project is complete to its satisfaction. Mr. Egerton seconded the motion, all in favor. Mr. Baker will send a letter to Mr. Trupiano. That's where the problem occurred. It's really a technical problem, because a motion to certify was not sufficient for the title company. They actually needed a certification signed by the majority of the board members, as provided in the, I think it's in the subdivision law. I looked up the section. So basically, what we've done is prepared the certification, and since we only have to have it signed by a majority of the board members, had it signed by me, Herm, and Hank, who's the vice chairman. Herm was on the board at the time, was the, were you chairman at the time?
I'm chair of the board, no.
Now you sent a board at the time. So that's what this is. It's basically just doing exactly what was done back in 2014, but in a more formal format. So I'm just, ask for a motion to approve the execution of the certificate of performance as provided to you and your packet. Anybody want to make that motion?
I mean, I'll make the motion that we vote to approve the certification as now assigned, which is requested by council for-
The buyer.
The buyer.
Of the lot, yeah.
Council of the buyer.
Okay. So Herm has made a motion to approve this sort of certificate of performance. Is there a second to the motion?
Can I vote on this?
Yeah, why not?
Five years ago.
Well, I wasn't on the board.
And you voted on it.
Yeah, sure. All, all this is, all this is doing, it's, it's a very technical thing.
Certifying that we did it.
Yeah, certifying that you did it, and you look at the minutes, and it was done.
In other words, we're approving the process, not the content.
Exactly.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah, right. Well, this one, it makes sense.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed, motion carried. Tom seconded the motion, just for the record. Herm, I don't know if you want to move your mic a little closer. I don't know how sensitive these things are.
Dave, you hearing me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Hank, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, had a woman who, who we ran into, I guess, at the climate change seminar, who was interested, expressed interest in being in this, our planner position. And so she provided a resume, which I've attached. Her name is Susan Quaitman, and Herm, and Hank and I met with her just informally at the planning board office, but basically, her, she didn't really add much beyond what's in her resume. You know, we, we just actually advertised for this position in a number of places. The good news is, the way the business has been going in the planning board the last few months, we have very little business that requires review for a planner, of a planner, so I mean, I guess that's lucky in a way. But in any event, here's her resume. You know, I guess the question I want to ask everyone is whether, looking at her qualifications, which are three pages long, unfortunately, most of them don't relate to our job.
That remains the problem.
Yeah. Whether we want to proceed any further in discussions with her right now, or we want to wait to see what we get from our ads, and I just wanted to-
I would offer the same, essentially the same opinion, in as much as I think that the resume is very interesting, we should retain it and consider it at a future date. She has, if she had a history that had been developed around her master's degree in regional planning, that would be one thing. But it doesn't seem to be very extensive in that regard, so I would say, let's, let's just hold on to it.
Tom, you have any opinion? Any different opinion? You don't have, you don't have to have an opinion.
Well, as I said earlier, I, I do know her from the organizing committee of the event that Hank met her, and I don't know of any specific experience for being a town planner. I know she has some energy and expertise in climate change, so any aspects of our planning relating to that might be a fit, but we should see how she compares with others that might come in, I suppose.
Okay. Yeah, she, she did, she acknowledged, and, you know, rightfully so, that she doesn't have the kind of technical skills to be a planner. She doesn't, she's certainly not familiar with the Rockport zoning code or zoning bylaws. She would be, she would have a very steep learning curve. She seems like a very intelligent woman, but as you can see from her resume, she just has not been focused on planning for the last few decades. So anyway, I, I agree with Herm, that's, those are my sentiments exactly. Let's wait, you know, hope, put this on hold, wait and see what happens. And as I think I mentioned earlier, that Kirk Baker has expressed a willingness to get involved in things on kind of a piece basis. So right now, I think we could take, make use of that. We're really not very busy. So anyway, that's, that's where we are with that. Okay.
What about the ad that went out? What was the basis for that? Was that a part-time, or?
Yeah, we're looking ten to fifteen hours a week, minimal, you know, coming to the town once a week to be available for people who have applications, not necessarily attending a night meeting, because of the potential hardship that may cost someone for those, you know, they may be in a different town.
So would that be a minimum of ten hours and a maximum of fifteen?
Well, you know, it's a work and process.
Can't be twenty.
It will not be twenty, guaranteed. We don't have enough business for someone to work twenty. In fact, sometimes I think Kirk was, you know, looking for business. Now, if we wanted to have the planner start to not just look at applications, but also look at, you know, potential revisions of the bylaws, that's a, that's a different story, because that could, you know, that could eat up a lot of hours. But, you know, we're, right now, we don't have any-
We did end up with an additional, I think, $7,000 in the budget, so I think there is a total of $50,000 in the budget.
Oh, now?
For this position.
Oh, really? I thought it was like thirty-something.
Check, check on it.
But whatever, it's kind of a-
Well, the additional seven, okay.
Okay.
I'd take, it's fifty-seven an hour, so that was kind of, that's what the fifty-seven contribution would go up, potentially go up, because there was an additional 7,000 that had been added to, but you're right, it's under, it's under 30,000 total.
Yeah, and we're not, as you can see from-
In fact, it's right here.
Yeah.
You can see it.
You can see it.
You can see it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not anywhere near that, so.
No.
Okay. Well, we'll see what happens with that. All right, moving on to item five, member items, communication from Chris Cusell. Everyone has a copy of that. You know, Chris has reached out a couple of times, saying, hi guys, what's going on? Are you doing any work on the TOD and the other bylaw of the Walkshed area? And you have his email here. You know, I, I haven't responded to him. I thought I'd bring it up to see what-
Well, we, we did discuss it in September. We did get additional comments. I did make additional changes in the zoning bylaws. I may have even passed them out, but said we wouldn't discuss them until now in October. So we could add it to the index, well, we, the meeting in two weeks, and, and discuss these zoning bylaws at that point in time for TOD. So yes, we are active, although we haven't done anything in recent weeks. And spring is still a consideration.
So what, what should I tell, how should I respond to Chris?
Send him a copy. I mean, I, I can, you know, I'll pass it on to you, you can send him.
Okay.
Send him a copy of the current status. He has, although I have, I asked him for a Word file, which I can manipulate myself, but there are some things that he can manipulate, especially with the diagrams and the pictures.
Well, it's, it's, it seems like he's interested in still being involved.
Yeah, right.
You know, it sounds like he's not really asking for any more money, just like he wants to be involved. I think he's invested a fair amount of time into this, and he'd like to see something happen.
It would look good on his resume if in fact-
Well, sure.
...the project could be brought to some sort of conclusion.
Right. Okay, well, we'll put it down for the agenda item for next meeting.
For next, two weeks.
I will respond to him. If you want to send me a copy of the related stuff, I'll send it to him.
I will do that.
Okay.
You do it.
The fiscal year, the expenditure report speaks for itself. You can see where we are. We're actually a pretty, looks like we're a pretty lean organization. We've got, this is one of the things that I, we were just talking about, the $34,900, is, you know, that would be money that would be available to, this fiscal year, would be available to hire a planner, but we're not anywhere near that at this point, so this is, you know, take a look at it. If anybody, unless anybody has any comments on it, I'm just going to move on to the next item. And that is a report on the Selectmen meeting, because I did go to the meeting, and we had a couple, two discussions, actually, Herm, one of them, I'll talk about this one. I did mention the, you know, the TOD, and, you know, kind of a very plain Manila way, we've got the TOD, we've got the half-mile Walkshed, et cetera, et cetera. And what was brought up by one of the Selectmen, I think it was Denise Donnelly, well, you know, have you read the Kleinfelter Report? I said, yeah, I've read it. And she said, well, you know, the sewer capacity is a big issue, and based on that report, that if, you know, if the TOD were ever constructed, then there would be, based on what was already existent and already on the books for planning, there'd be no more further capacity. And she basically said, she was the only one who really said something about this, was that if, you know, we really have to look at the sewer situation first before we go forward with these, you know, something like the TOD. So that was the feedback I got.
So here's my response. My response is that the crushing issue that the town faces is school-aged children. If the town is interested in maintaining a high school, then the town has to attract more school-aged children. You can't attract school-aged children if you don't have residences. If you don't, in a sense, work towards moderately priced, inexpensively priced housing at, in some location in town, then the, any issue that comes up with regard to supporting the schools with additional funding seems to be ludicrous. So I see the sewer, the sewer limitations as being somewhat of a red herring. It definitely has to be dealt with. It definitely is a limitation. Is there any way that, that limitation can be made less, less of a compass, of an encumbrance? Because we have to do one or the other. We either, if we're going to be nothing but a retirement town, and we're going to leave green as green and not develop anything further, that's a decision that needs to be made, because the schools, on the other hand, cannot be, cannot be financed, cannot be, the student classrooms cannot be filled unless we have additional young children. So I see it as a big problem. I see, again, the sewer limitations as a bit of a red herring, because it's always raised. Everyone, I've heard it several, several times over the years. And, and that's fine. It's a limitation, but it doesn't have to be an absolute limitation. I think we can work around it one way or another.
Tom?
I'd like to hear how we would work around it, but-
Well, I mean, we, but that, that comes from a committee, you know? And that's, and that's where we, where we sit down and we say, okay, outflow, part of our limitation is outflow. Could we not have outflow on the south end of town, as well as outflow here out of the harbor? I mean, if you were to look at this critically, you would say the outflow that we currently have from the harbor isn't even in the right location. The outflow should be out further in Sandy Bay. It's just off the end of Bear Skin Neck. So there are lots of hidden aspects to this sewer limitation problem, but I don't see it as a, as an absolute.
Well, I don't, what I, I, to an extent, I agree with Herm on this. I think that the sewer issues don't necessarily preclude further development. I think the sewer and, I mean, the TOD, if we, if this got voted in tomorrow, it would be quite a long time before anything would be built. And guess what? If it were going to be built, the capacity, sewer capacity would be one of the issues that have to be discussed. But it's not approved tomorrow, and it's going to be quite a while, if it ever gets approved. And, you know, the two, the TOD and the sewer can be worked on together. I mean, it's like you can't walk and chew gum at the same time. Well, you can. And, you know, part of the big issue with the sewer is infiltration. You know, and that's, that's something-
It's certainly referenced.
That's a big matter.
There's been a lot of work done on it.
So, in any, in any event, I'm just reporting on what-
No, I understand.
-you know, what was said. you know, what was said.
I understand.
Okay, I just, I brought it up, and then the other thing that was discussed, um, I did bring up Fifty-One Marmion Way, and I did, you know, we talked about council's opinion, which everyone has a copy of, uh, about Fifty-One Marmion Way, because, you know, you're their selectmen, they're, they're the boss of the, the building inspector, you know, they're the ones who say, "Enforce this, don't enforce this," or, you know, litigation or no litigation, they're, they have the authority to do that, we don't. And, um, there was a, um, you know, kind of a lukewarm response, I should say, um, Sarah Wilkinson, there was one comment, and maybe there was more than one, but I remember this one, she said, "Well, has the owner of Fifty-One Marmion Way been given a building permit for what was planned there?"
Sure.
And I said, "Yeah," she said, "Oh, really?" So, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, okay?
No, but it's...
But I, it was kind of like, "Oh, well, they already gotten a," I, it seemed to me she was saying, and, you know, she's not here to, to change this, but that if they already have a building permit for this construction, that the town, it didn't seem to me, the message I was getting, was that the town is not interested in, you know, doing something over the, the decision of the building inspector on this project. I didn't get that sense, no one raised that issue, no one said, "Well, we've got, you know, we got an opinion from council," um, so that's just the sense I got. The other thing, and I think, and, and I was actually waiting for you to, you weren't at the last meeting, but, uh, the, this section has good concepts, but it probably could be reworked, uh, to be, you know, to have maybe more clarity. I don't know if that's something that you are interested in looking at, Herm, because I know you were the primary author of it.
There were two aspects to it, I, clarity is always important, I'm not saying that, um, additional clarity almost with regard to anything isn't a possibility, what I don't want to see is, I don't want to bring something up to try to gain additional clarity than see it go down to defeat. Um, what I want to see is, I want to see the building inspector, um, I want to see that he has a feeling of obligation to look at the bylaws and interpret the bylaws and not argue with us about the interpretation. If he has a difficulty with an interpretation, he should be coming to us, or he should be going to town council, and, but he shouldn't be first operating independently, um, as if he fully understands or appreciates the bylaws. When I spoke with him, his concern, um, was, "Oh, that isn't the way I read the sum total of this," uh, in other words, adding the residence to the accessory buildings. He, "Oh, that isn't the way I read that, that isn't the way that statement was," I said, "Yes, it does, it does say the total of." Um, so then he changed his argument and he said, "Oh, no, that might be a hindrance to somebody who had a three thousand square foot house, and suddenly they wanted to put on a garage, and that was going to push them into the four thousand square foot category, and therefore the side setback, um, side setbacks might not be in conformance," but we really have always thought that it isn't the existing side setbacks of the house that have to be changed, it's that the side setback for the garage would have to be in conformance, so that would have to be twenty feet, albeit the house was fifteen. So he created another reason to be in opposition to this, which I don't appreciate, um, because I think that he is obligated to try, when we had sixty-nine Marmion Way here before us, sixty-nine conformed, they understood that that garage had to be twenty feet away from the side, and it was. Um, so therefore, what, what's going on, you know, um, can't we, can't we, in a sense, encourage him to, to, in a sense
I don't know.
be, um, to be a bit more restrictive, you know, in as much as that was the goal of the bylaw, um, and now the Garage Foundation is not in.
I know.
So here, so here we are in this situation where that should be, um, I believe, uh, twenty feet, a twenty-foot side setback, um...
It can't be, because, I'll tell you why, because if, if you've got, the space there is so tight, that if you move that garage an additional ten feet toward the house...
Well, it's five feet anyway, but, but...
Well, it's ten feet, it's right on the, it's ten feet right now, it's right on the ten-foot setback, the garage.
There's no garage.
Well, where it will be, on the plan, if you look at the plan
Yeah.
it's, it's, and I, I discussed this with Paul, I went to the side, I looked at the plan, the, the garage, the edge of the garage as proposed, it's not built.
As proposed, right.
Right, is ten feet from the property line. The garage also has to be fifteen feet from the main dwelling. If you move, if you had to move that garage to make the twenty feet to, you know, from the property line, then the fifteen-foot spread from the garage to the main dwelling would now be infringed on.
I understand.
So, I, I guess what, what Paul, and I'm not, look, we got an opinion from council, she said that she glommed onto the language that said, "The building under consideration," and that, it clarified it in one way, but made it, uh, unclear in another, because she said the building under consideration, and that could refer to new construction only, so you could have a situation where you have a, an existing house, um, and the existing house is under four thousand square feet, but then you have a new garage that's proposed, that puts the whole gross floor area over four thousand square feet, but since you're only looking at the new garage, that, according to the way council's written it, that you don't have the, it doesn't trigger the twenty-foot setback, so, I mean...
I, I understand what she's saying.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, that's one of the areas that maybe could be cleared up.
Well, it's possible, and, and I'm not saying no, but I'm not, I'm not sure that her interpretation is absolute either, because the, the intent is to increase the distance between properties when houses get bigger, that's the intent.
I understand, that's a good intent.
And if, and if there is a need to get a, um, uh, special permit, um, not of any interest, but I'll say a special permit
Area variance, yeah.
Um, to bring the garage and the house closer together, because the, um, pushing the garage or, or creating a twenty-foot side setback on the garage makes the garage and the house too close, um, that may be, that may be, um, something that could be considered. My concern, my concern is the future, the future is that they've gone to the extreme with regard to the house, it's only ten, it's only a ten, a fifteen-foot side setback for the house, and now they're going to, uh, what?
Are you talking about Fifty-One Marmion?
Fifty-One Marmion Way, it looks like a fifteen-foot side setback for the house, and then they're doing a ten-foot side setback for the garage, and they're supposed to be both twenty, and then they're going to come along at a future point in time, they're gonna say, "You know what, we want to connect the garage and the house."
Well, that would be a whole issue.
And then all of a sudden, we have no control over the situation, and right now, we have a bylaw in place that says
Yeah.
it's supposed to be twenty and twenty.
Well, look, I, I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying, but I also have to say that I do read what council says when she says, you know, this, this bylaw could be made more clear.
True.
And, and what I'm thinking is, if we work on it, um, and make it more clear, then there won't be any room for anybody to say, "Well, I, this is the way I interpreted, this is the way I interpreted, this is the way it is," and it's just, it's something to think about, I mean, frankly, I don't know how much, we don't have any control over the building inspector, and I didn't get the sense, maybe he'll, maybe he'll change his ways now that he's gotten the opinion from council, but I can tell you right now, I did not get any, any feeling from the selectmen that they, they wanted to really dig into this.
They don't want, they don't want
You know?
They don't want any friction with him, but from my point of view, and I think from the board's point of view when we wrote it, was that we were trying to establish some side setbacks that would create, um, or, or in a sense, maintain greater space between properties as properties got larger, and that's what, that's all about.
I, I understand exactly where your intent was.
So therefore, um, to allow that piece of property to be built as if the side setbacks don't apply, and then to work towards, trying to, um, revise this, um, bylaw in some way, which is going to draw up a set of guidelines that will absolutely dictate that what we intend is in fact going to go forward in the future, oh boy, it's like, and then for the moment, you know, we, we
Well, listen, it's...
he will not adhere to anything.
Well, it's something to think about, okay?
Sure.
I, I leave it up, I, I'm leaving it up to you, because I think, I believe you were the primary author of the original version, uh, if you...
We saw a problem, and
Right.
the problem was created by houses that were built in Pigeon Cove, and we came up with a solution, and it was, yes, I was the principal author of it, but, um, it was a need, there was a, there was a glaring need for something.
Would you, would you be interested in being the principal author of any possible revision?
Oh, I'd certainly be interested in doing that, um, you know, if, if we don't get into a situation of where, um, somehow whether there's going to be an effort to try to reduce the effectiveness of it, I mean, we've got another bylaw on the books that is, which is violated routinely, and that's this hedge, um, along, um, the ocean between the street and the water, and, my goodness, it's violated all along Marmion Way, even, it's violated even on Old Garden Road where in fact a house was built, and we said to this individual, "Now you have to maintain, you got a four-foot wall, you're gonna maintain that hedge at four feet." It's just, nobody is interested in, um, trying to, and I can take you back to the, um, original description, the original concerns of the town fathers in nineteen fifty-one with regard to maintaining view of the water, and I can show you all the evidence that, um, says that their interest was in maintaining a, or allowing no more than a four-foot high hedge, um, along the roads, along the water, and yet, um, he, although he is charged with enforcing the bylaws, that is, that's in the bylaws
Right.
um, he doesn't do it, and, um, it, it makes the laughing stock.
Is that, is that, that's in the zoning bylaw, the hedge, the hedge thing?
The hedge thing is in there, and, and his obligation to enforce.
Um, all right, well, I just brought it up
Yeah.
it's something that, uh, might, you might want to take another look at.
And with regard to Fifty-One, nobody's interested in doing anything about Fifty-One.
Nothing, I would be highly surprised if anything happened with Fifty-One. Fifty-One is, actually, the square footage is, it's about six hundred square feet over the four thousand
Right.
total.
Right.
So, which, of course, Paul pointed out to me, that it's only six hundred square feet.
That's, that's, that's it, you know, I mean, that's where you, you either believe that that difference is important, or you don't, he's just saying, "Oh, it doesn't..."
Well, listen, we, we can be the biggest cheerleaders for this anywhere in the town, but if, if we don't have a building inspector, and we don't have a so, board of selectmen who wanna do something in it.
Well, it isn't that I, I mean, I'm willing to go before the board of selectmen and say, "Listen, what, what do you want?" In other words, this is what's happening to the town, and, and this is what the, what the town father said in nineteen fifty-one, this was their intent, now, oh, times change, no, times don't necessarily change if in fact you want to try to have an environment in town that allows people to see the water as it always was.
I think it'll get, I think you, there'd be support for that, I don't think...
Well, then, then that's where we go.
Yeah, but, you know, Marmion Way is, no, not to disparage Marmion Way, but it's kind of exhibit, what's been happening there is kind of a exhibit A for why you want this thing, because they're, well, I just drove, drove down it today, and it's just one house after another, and everyone's got a, you know, it's like East Hampton or something.
And some of it is newly, newly planted.
Newly planted.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Not just old growth.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, 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 absolutely.
It's really...
Yeah. It's kind of the poster child, really.
Well, I mean, I, I will either go before it.
Yeah, well, listen, you can, you, you know...
You know, this is, this is not what was intended
Yeah.
either initially or when we wrote this bylaw, and it's not what's being...
Well, they, and, and I think what they may do is that, I mean, and you're certainly welcome to do that, but they may say, "Well, listen, our council has said this bylaw needs to be revised, to be made more clear, and that's what we're looking for," and that's what they'll tell you, so, you know. All right, well, let's, uh, the, the next item that I got, this is kind of an unusual communication, I got a letter from, dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, from, um, the assistant fire chief, John Porter, which was received by the planning board on October tenth of two thousand nineteen. So I don't know what happened to it between the, between March and October, but it's regarding Hillside Road, and he says, to whom it may, and don't, remember, this is, you know, Seventy Pigeon Hill, "The Rockport Fire Department has surveyed Hillside Road as requested by the planning board." Okay, so far, so good, a few months late. "We have found approximately the first hundred and fifty feet of the road acceptable." Of course, I don't know where that hundred and fifty starts and ends, but he says a hundred and fifty feet, and when he says acceptable, I don't know what that means either, and then he goes on to say, "The second approximately hundred and fifty feet of the road, starting at Keating, up to the rear of Seventy Pigeon Hill Street, we request that be equal to the width of the first and last sections of the roadway." So I'm not, it's not clear to me what he's talking about.
Look at the drawing.
Yeah, "All other aspects of the roadway are acceptable." That's the letter, uh, I, the reason...
You need to go take a look at it now, because they have in fact, um, expanded the width of it, or added gravel to it, um, and, and it isn't really even from Keating, if I'm not mistaken, the original letter, which was not from he, but was from, from Jim
Doyle?
Doyle.
I don't know where this one...
Made reference to Keating, and, um, but anyway, uh, it would be worth taking a look at it again, but...
We, we spent, Tom and I spent quite a time there when, when Ninety Pigeon Hill was before this board, and looking at that road, um, and I, you know, I don't really have a clear recollection of it anymore, but I guess the reason this is timely is because, um, a property owner on the, Seventy Pigeon Hill is on, I guess it would be, what, the east side of the road, property owner on the west side of the road wants to create a lot, and the, um, building inspector asked me, "What did you do with Seventy Pigeon Hill?" And I told him what we did, and pulled out the minutes, and then, um, Hank wrote a note on this letter of his opinion, um, which anybody can read if they want, he's not here, but he wrote a note today about it, and, um, so it's probably worth revisiting Pigeon Hill Road, at least
It's the Hillside Road.
Hillside Road, just to, I wouldn't mind going back up there, just to refresh my recollection, because it sounds like we're gonna be seeing that road again.
Well, it's, it's going to be
I just have a feeling we are.
There was a lot that was sold, five acres were sold, um, and are going to be subdivided, I think, into two house lots.
Yeah.
Uh, and, um
That's what this guy...
And that will, about Hillside Road on the east side.
Steve Klatsch, Steve Klatsch, does that ring a bell?
It doesn't, I don't know who bought it, I know who sold it, that's all.
Anyway.
Um, but, um, yes, I do know that that's going to come up, okay.
Okay, uh, anyway, next item is administration, approval of bill...
Can I, can I add something, uh, member item?
Member item, sure.
Um, there is, as I think I mentioned a few weeks back, um, that a few individuals had, more than one, had come to me and were concerned about the conversion of commercial property to residential property, uh, on Main Street in the downtown section
Bear Skin Neck, right?
and also Bear Skin Neck.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I'd like to, uh, have a meeting, I'd like to have a forum where the homeowners, um, the commercial property owners, the tenants, um, the shopkeepers that is, um, come and speak their piece with regard to possible zoning changes for downtown and Bear Skin Neck, along the lines of, um, mixed remains mixed, commercial remains commercial, and commercial cannot be converted to residential. Um, and, um... Um, and, um, and see what, um, what the initial results happen to be from that kind of a discussion because if we don't do anything about it, as you, uh, have probably seen, if you get down to Tuna Wharf, you'll see that there are several structures down there that have been converted to condos that used to be shops. And, um, that is, um, I don't think fares well for the town. The town has a certain character, excuse me, that is going to, um, if it continues, change the character of the town. And again, it's one of these things where if that's what the town wants, then the town has to be aware upfront that that's what's going on. And if they don't like it, then we have to do something about it.
Well, Herm, I think, and we've talked about this before, because I know you've brought this up before, that if these, if there are people who have this concern, then, you know, that's why we have, we've got two public discussion periods. And, you know, I'm sure Toby and Xenus would be happy to have company in terms of bringing things up. So those people should come to the meeting. Uh, you know, I know you said.
But I think, I think.
I don't want to have a forum unless there's a reason to have a forum. And right now, we haven't heard anything.
I want it, I want it to be bigger than just coming to, um, this arena, um, and to, in a sense, um, allow them to speak for a brief period of time. I want it to be a full discussion of what in fact is a major change for town. This is not minor.
Yeah, but, but here's the problem, I mean, and I don't have a problem with that conceptually, but the problem I have right now is that whoever these people are, and there may be people out there that we're not aware of, they need to at least come here to advocate for just what you're advocating for. I mean, they, we, we need to hear from the property owners that this is an issue, and we haven't. And we need to, you know, they need to.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm.
I mean, they can't just hide, hide in the woods until.
No, it isn't that they're hiding in the woods.
No, and we need, come, come to the meeting, that's what.
But they're, but they're, they're not. I believe that it requires, again, a bigger forum. They don't have, they don't see this as the bigger forum. No, this is, this is, um, not the place where the real estate agents are going to come and the, uh, property owners are going to come, and the homeowners or whether the shopkeepers are going to come, um, unless we make it more than simply a discussion prior to our meeting or a discussion at the end of the meeting. It has to be a public forum.
Well, look, if, if somebody, if somebody, real estate property owner comes here and says, listen, or two people or three people come here and say, we, we want to have a, this is a big issue and we need to have a discussion, not necessarily at the Planning Board meeting, but at a special meeting or something, that's one thing. But so far, we haven't heard from anybody, not one person. So if, if it's such an issue, um.
It's an issue if you.
They need to come here.
If you go, if you walk on Main Street and you see what's going on at the old Granite Savings Bank, and if you go down to Tuna Wharf, then you will see exactly what is bothering them. And, and yes, I can ask them to come.
Yeah, I think you should.
But I mean, but the fact remains is that the, the need is there whether, and, and a forum is required more than just this. So if I get some of those people to come and express those opinions, um, that's fine. But then I'm hoping that the next step on, on the part of the board is to have this forum.
Right, well, it may be. It just.
No, what I mean, I don't.
We just need to hear what they have to say.
Right, but it isn't.
Right now, it's only from you.
True, but it isn't just a maybe issue. I, I do, um, I do rub elbows with people all across this town.
Yeah.
And if you in fact, you know.
So do I.
Well, you do.
Maybe different people.
That's right, different people. So therefore, I am, I am expressing a point of view which has been expressed by significant individuals in town. Um, so therefore, the question then becomes, we need to go the step further if in fact the only way to con, to convince you that these people exist is to have them come, then I'll have them, but I mean, I, I take offense at that a little bit. But anyway, the fact remains is that, yes, I'll ask two or three of them to come, um, and to express their opinion with regard to this need. But, um, we do need to, to act on the potential of a zoning change, bring it before the town, and see whether or not the town will buy into it because the character of the town.
Well, don't, don't take offense at it. What I would like to hear is, you know, it's like the game of Operator we all played when we were kids. I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear directly.
No, don't even do that.
No, I'd like to hear directly from the people.
But I'll ask them, I'll ask them to come.
Yeah.
I mean, it is the point, but, but don't, but don't.
Put it on the agenda.
But don't.
Okay.
Don't dismiss.
Enough said for now.
Well, we have had another expression of interest along that exact line from the Economic Development Committee. They had actually approached the zoning board of appeals thinking that they were the leverage for changing the zoning to help with this situation. And then I think, Herm, you and I both attended one of their meetings separately and heard what their concern was. So there's another town committee with this interest.
You know, that's, that's great, but, you know, we are, we don't have a lot of business. We welcome, we are regularly scheduled meetings. Everyone knows where we meet, when we meet. They have the opportunity to come here and talk to us, just like they can talk to the selectmen or anybody else about issues like this. So come on, come on down, as they usually say.
But then, but then we can't limit them to three minutes.
Well, we might limit them to three minutes now, but if, if it looks like, hey, there's a big issue here, then I would agree with you. There may be, it may be appropriate to have a, a wider.
So it's not public discussion, it'll be an agenda, an agenda item?
Well, let's see what we have.
No, I, I want it as an agenda item.
Well, I know you do, but right now, I don't think that's.
But what's wrong with having it as an agenda item?
Because I don't think that's appropriate yet.
Then they won't come.
Yet.
They won't come.
Well, then, fine. Then they don't come.
No, that's, that's not, then I'll have my own meeting if that be the case.
You can have your own meeting.
Okay, then I will.
Really, if you want. I mean, that's, that's what you want to do.
Well, I mean, it's, it's one of these things where it should be an agenda item if you want them to come.
I, I still.
Why wouldn't you like it?
I don't want to belabor this because I think we've talked about it enough, but.
No, and we haven't talked about it enough.
Well, I think we have.
Why, why don't, why don't you want it to be an agenda item?
Because there's nothing there. I haven't heard from one member of the public, realtor, landlord, tenant, anybody who said that there's a problem with the zoning. I've heard it from you that there are unidentified people out there who think there's a problem, and they want to have a public forum to address it. The answer to that is not yet. And if they can't bring themselves here to come to a meeting and talk for a few minutes about their concerns, then I'm not interested in having a public forum. And I think the rest of the board will back me up on that.
Why do you say that?
Because, well, have a vote. If you want to have a vote on it. There's one person here, there's another person here, we're missing, we're missing two members of the board.
But the fact remains is that here's, here's an issue that should be identified, has been identified, and these people should be given the courtesy of having it as an agenda item if in fact we care about it. I think that.
You're, I guess you're not hearing what I'm saying, Herm. I'm saying that let's have them at least come to a meeting to express their concern, and if it's a big enough item that it looks like we, they, it needs further consideration on more than your public discussion forum, then we'll talk about making it an agenda item. But right now, you haven't given anybody anything. And it's just like, it, we're not there, that's all, okay?
No, it's not.
So let's, let's, uh, administration approval of bills.
One other item that I had mentioned at maybe before the beginning of the meeting, just learned this afternoon that Ed Hand has submitted his resignation.
Right.
As MAPC representative, submitted to the selectmen. So I know we're not in a position to make a recommendation now, but just to let it be known, the position is open, and I guess someone can express interest in it or however you want to do it.
Yeah, how would we, um, what, does that person have to be a member of the Planning Board?
Well, not recently, because Ed's been doing it after being off the board, and that seemed to work for this selectman. I don't know. Maybe it just never came up.
So how do you think we would?
Ideally, it should be somebody from.
Yeah, well, that would be the best thing, but like you said, like for yourself, for example, you'd be interested, but you don't really have the time to do this. So, you know, obviously, if someone on the Planning Board wants to do it, I think the job is theirs.
Yeah.
But if no one on the Planning Board wants to do it, how do, how does, how does the word get out?
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting and see if someone has got some ideas or interest.
Rep, okay. Is he resigning now, or?
He didn't say when it was effective. I assumed it was pretty soon, if not immediate.
Okay. Okay, uh, approval of bills. We have one bill for $477 for advertising that was placed by the town administrator in the Gloucester Times and the Salem paper. This is for ads relating to our planner position. And so we need to have a motion to approve the payment of the $477 bill submitted by the, what is the company is the?
North of Boston.
North of Boston Media, thank you. Anyone want to make that motion?
I will move to approve the bill as described.
Okay. Herm?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Motion made just for their steno, uh, motions made by Tom, seconded by Herm, and unanimous for the board. Okay.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street, deport gas on the flames. You're a little tiff over whether you would change the zoning to indulge certain people. Herman Lilia wanted a, a meeting as an agenda item. I seem to recall a great deal of effort went into your new rules, um, which prohibit people from speaking during the course of the meeting. So why would these people, if it were an agenda item, be privileged to talk during the course of the meeting when those of us who come faithfully are not?
Well, it's not going to be an agenda item at this point. They can come to the meeting.
Good.
You didn't, maybe you didn't hear.
I heard, I heard.
Yeah, they can come to the meeting like anyone else and say that this is a matter of import, and it, it's a broad community issue, and it needs to be addressed in more than just a public discussion.
Excellent, and they would be pleased.
And if that's, if that's the case, then, and if what they say resonates and makes sense, then a agenda item will be entertained. But not just because anybody, whether they're on the board, me included, or anybody in the audience says this item should be an agenda item because these, because somebody wants to speak, isn't, it's not enough to make something an agenda item.
I agree, I agree 110%.
So that's where we are.
But I'm still, either you don't understand what I'm saying, or, or.
Maybe I don't.
I'm saying, if it is an agenda item, you get to talk about it, you, the members of the board, whoever comes clamoring for whatever they want, only gets to speak at the three minutes at the beginning and the end, just like the rest.
Well, we're, right now, you're, right now, right now, we're at, anybody who comes and wants to speak about it has their three minutes, just like everybody else.
Good.
And if it, some, if.
Good.
If it's something that needs to go further, then we'll go further. But we don't, we don't know that.
Good, good.
Okay?
If we've not totally wasted the three minutes, Herman Lilia spoke about hedges. Hedges are not included in any of the bylaws. The only place where hedges are included is the site plan review where it talks about minimizing interference with use.
That's not true. Because walls are included in the bylaws, and the state interprets walls and hedges in the same way.
No, they're not in the bylaws.
All right, well, they, either they are or they aren't, and it doesn't, you know, doesn't matter. Z?
Z Sepulon, 92 Granite Street. Six or seven years ago, the Economic Development Committee in this town convinced town meeting to appropriate some funds to have an economic study done, and Professor Bluestone of the Northeastern University came down, went to the Rockport Inn and Suites and, and interviewed a number of business owners. And as a result of that, they came up with a list of recommendations, what the town needed to do to further economic develop, further economic development. And there weren't very, the recommendations that Bluestone came out with were very, very slim, but one of them was that if Rockport was interested in pursuing and increasing its economic development, to get rid of the zoning that allows residential housing in business and commercial uses. That was one of the only two things that I can recall that had any real impact. So you do have some outside independent so-called expert opinion on this, and it really would be worthwhile, I think, if this town ever would try to study something and try to get some facts and find out whether or not it makes a big difference to this town's future, if we do have business districts, or if we do just let them all go to condominiums. In line with that, five or six years ago, I gave this town a detailed study of the Newport, Newport, Rhode Island Harbor areas and an extensive study that they did down there, which, which came forth with the fact that business and waterfront uses contributed about three times as much tax revenue per acre as residential condominiums. That pile of papers is still in your other office there in Cabinet. But maybe sometime you can look at that stuff, and then maybe when people come to you from the town that would just like to get something on an agenda, you might listen to them. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to re-butt something. Um, I have the old edition of the bylaws, but on page 25 of the bylaws that were published in.
Are you talking about the hedges?
February 14, and fences. No fence shall exceed four feet in height above the ground on any lot line between the coastline and the nearest public way. The definition of a fence under state guidelines includes walls, berms, the whole bit. So there is a guideline.
Four feet.
Well, wait, hold on. You're, you're saying the definition, just for my clarification, is in the bylaw, or you gotta look somewhere else?
It's in the state, state regulations, that a fence includes a berm, a wall, um, bushes, a hedge row, everything.
Putting two and two together to make five, conflating two separate sets of.
Well, look.
I'm not.
Herm, listen, there's no point in having an argument about this.